All right, if I could get everyone's attention, please, if you'd stand and join us in the pledge. You want to start us off there?
I pledge allegiance to the republic into which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks. Take your seats. So what's your name?
The ambassador.
Okay. Okay, good evening and welcome. Let me call to order this regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council here on Tuesday, April 1st, 2014, at 5:30. And welcome, everyone, to the council chambers. This may be a record. And Dr. Cross said he wasn't claiming, but maybe a couple of the students. So it's great to see the, I guess it's government classes, maybe, that are here tonight. Okay?
My students see enough of me in the classroom, I can't imagine any of them wanting anymore.
Dr. Cross and Mr. Hogan have volunteered to stay here as long as you would like this evening, to answer any questions you might have. So feel free to keep them as long as you'd like. And Cindy Stafford, the city secretary, also asked me to pass on to each of you that you can get access to the city council agendas online. You just go to the city website. So if you need that information to turn in to prove that you were here tonight, or for other uses, to get extra credit, or whatever, just go to the website and you can pull up the agendas. You can go all the way back to 1898 if you want to, but it's listed there by date. So thanks for being here tonight. We will, at this time, go ahead and proceed to the second item on the agenda, which is citizens' general discussion. And at this time, we provide for any citizen that would like to come forward and speak on any issue. Just, I guess, sir, come forward and state your name and address for the record, and ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
This bud and I'd had a pick for this. I'm Freddie Goble. I live at 413 Blue Bonnet. First, I have on the deal is a question, I guess it'd have to be for Mark or Randy, or Cindy or somebody. If Brady would happen to get elected to the mayor, what would the procedure be on filling his seat? If he would win, then that seat would be open. So I'm asking, what would the procedure be then? Mark, Randy?
Would you like for me to?
Cindy?
Here, go ahead.
It would be the same thing that occurred when Ms. Taylor moved outside the city limits and vacated her seat. First thing we would do, the council would have an opportunity to appoint someone until the next election, or we could leave it vacant until the next election date. There's only two general election dates, and so it would be put on the ballot at the November election to fill that seat.
So in the end term, would it be filled with someone?
They could. We chose not to for Ms. Taylor this year, but again, they have a choice. They would have to make that choice, whether they wished to appoint, or just leave it vacant until the next election date.
So, sir, the answer to your question, then, is, as Mark is stating, that the council would vote and decide which option to proceed with. We would consider it on its individual merit, not just take last time as a precedence of how we proceed, but we would decide and then go from there.
My question, that being, the city council would then be filling the vacancy with someone other than the voting public put in there?
No, not, they would consider that as an option, but that has not been done in recent history, I think is...
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
One more. On the fire station, did it get sold? The old fire station?
Yes, that's correct, right, Mark.
How many bids did they get on it?
One.
One? Was it put up for bid?
No, sir. We negotiated, and we're allowed to legally sell it to the adjoining property owner, which in this case was Tarleton State University, and we came to an agreed price.
That would be like me going out and buying an automobile, paying for cash, and then when I got, they told me then, when I got through, got through using the automobile, they wanted back and paid me for it wherever they wanted to pay. I thought the city was obligated to have bids on any city property.
The adjoining property owners have first rights in negotiations.
But if it's not put up for bid, it's just, may not be proper. Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? I will state, just briefly, on the fire station, there was a lot of work that went in to negotiate between the city and Tarleton on what the final outcome of that would be. And with any property, there's some give and take, some things that needed to be upgraded to the facility that Tarleton accepted, and some things that we were able to get out of it as well. So it was not just a spur-of-the-moment issue, it was a negotiated agreement. Any others? Okay, then, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Stevensville Historical Museum Annual Report and Presentation. And I ask Ms. Kate Barton to come forward. You know you're going to get this kind of crowd tonight, right?
Everybody come on down to the museum.
That's right.
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Kate Barton, and I'm president of the board of directors of Stevensville Museum. And I'd like to acknowledge my fellow board members who are here tonight and support of the museum. Thank you for being here. And I had a corny April Fool's joke planned, but my husband reminded me that I'm not as funny as I think I am, so I'm going to stick with the script tonight.
Okay.
Okay, as evidenced by our guest count, the museum continues to be a popular spot for visitors to Stevensville as well as locals. I think we can confidently claim the best photo shoot location in town based on the number of photographers that visit the grounds and the frequency of their visits. Within the last few weeks, Thetis Edwards was elected to our board, bringing our total board count to 18 instead of 17. Okay, this slide details our proposed 2014 budget. As you can see in our income, 2013 was an exceptional year for donations, with several large donations coming in at year end, which is not surprising. We do not expect 2014 donation income to equal 2013. We are currently in the process of writing a grant specifically for archive improvements. If awarded, this grant will bring $6,000 to the museum's archives. The portion of hotel motel tax that the museum receives is in large part what keeps us operational on a day-to-day basis. We very much appreciate this income and count on every single dollar we get from the city. We hope to make $5,000 in the fundraising activities that we have identified for this year. The museum continues to make sales in our gift shop, which is good for the museum and also good for several local authors and craftspeople, a couple of which we have here in the room with us tonight. As far as our operating expenses, we were under budget for salaries in 2013 because our weekend docent was off alternating weeks for a portion of the year. This is not the case for 2014, so we've budgeted accordingly. Our maintenance budget is significant because of several critical need projects that we delayed last year. The income we didn't spend last year in these projects will be spent this year to complete them. Those projects include re-roofing our cabins and schoolhouse, completing repairs to the Berry Cottage porch and balcony. Y'all might have noticed that that's been missing for several months. We're hoping to get that done within the next couple of months, painting the Berry Cottage, rebuilding our luggage wagon, making significant improvements to the archives, and money permitting, painting and making constructive repairs to the chapel, because the chapel is a moneymaker for us, so we want that to be in the best shape possible. We've increased the budget for our special event fundraising category because of the cost of bricks for our brick fundraiser. Our office expenses are expected to be slightly higher this year because we'd like to replace the computer in our museum office. All that being said, our proposed budget is almost $73,000. You can skip back, skip back there and just run most of that. As I said before, the museum counts on every single dollar we receive in hotel motel tax, and we very much appreciate that. But the board recognizes that we need to supplement our income through fundraising activities. And here what's on the slide are a couple of the things that we're doing this year. We've got our Pathway to the Past Brick Fundraiser, which is ongoing. We have the Oxford House Soup Supper, the profits of which go specifically to the Oxford House renovations. And we have our Motorcycle Fun Run scheduled for the fall, which is also a moneymaker and brings people in, usually from outside of Eberth County. The museum is fortunate to have a board of dedicated volunteers that makes special programs available to the community. These include Bygone Days, Camp Pioneer, and the upcoming Native and Airloom Plant Fair. We are honored to be chosen by local educators as a destination for field trips and class activities. Tours of the museum grounds are also part of the curriculum for several Tarleton courses. We are excited about a potential partnership with the Baske River Trail Project to promote local history along the trail. We've also planned a parent's day out activity for December that will welcome kids to the museum to celebrate the holidays in pioneer style. We truly want to share our history with the community and beyond. Okay, last year, the museum was chosen to participate in an assessment sponsored by a grant from the National Institute of Conservation. We felt pretty fortunate to participate in this activity. We had on site a professional conservator and an architect who is experienced in historical structures. They were on the grounds for two days and looked in every nook and cranny on the museum grounds, which actually, we didn't mind. Their report has helped us better understand the long-term needs of the museum, as well as opportunities that we can make, or opportunities for improvement that we can make to our archive collection and our general programming. So we're excited to have that information and continue to work with it over the next couple of years. Okay, the Oxford House cannot go unmentioned, of course. As you may know, repairs and renovations to the Oxford House are made through donations, grants, and designated fundraising events. We continue to operate on the 10-year timeline for completion that was established in 2011. The goal for this year is to raise the funding necessary for the exterior repair and painting, which is estimated to cost about $45,000. So we'd like to start painting in 2014 and turn the Oxford House blue into Oxford House green. That was short and sweet. I appreciate the time here tonight and the audience. I'd like to open the floor to any questions that anybody has about what's going on at the museum.
Any questions for Kate? Mr. Nix?
I appreciate y'all's work. You provide a huge asset to our community in a number of ways.
Thank you, thank you.
Does any of your normal operational budget go towards the work that's being done on the Oxford House, or is it strictly funded through the donations that come in separately?
It's separate. We have a general umbrella account, but the funds that go toward the Oxford House, as far as repairs and renovations, are outside of the money that we receive from the city. So it's all specific earmarked donations, grants, and any fundraising activities that we do.
And the soup supper is very good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kate? Okay, well, thank you. I would also like to applaud you for your leadership, new president, and the great work that your organization is doing to preserve our history. You mentioned the Baske River Trail, and the synergy that has picked up between the museum and the trail, I think, is noteworthy. And I'll just remind any citizens tonight that if you have a story to tell about the Baske, the museum is collecting an oral history of that, and you can contact the museum about that. It's a great initiative. And I've also been impressed with y'all going high-tech by using QR codes with a lot of your displays. And some of the folks in this crowd will know what those mean. If you don't, just ask somebody sitting next to you. So it's great, great work for our community.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And like I said, every dollar that we get from the city truly makes a difference at the museum. So thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I think that we accept the annual report from the Historical Museum?
Second the motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. McDannell, to accept the Stevensville Historical Museum Annual Report as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous approving that report. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
All right, now we'll move to item four on the agenda, Planning and Zoning Commission Report. And just turn it over to Ms. Chu. There you are.
Good evening, mayor and council. The first item you have on the report from the Planning and Zoning Commission is to consider annexation proceedings for 420 acres of land in the M.R. Williams survey, which is located in Area E of the city's master annexation plan. The only action that will be required of the council this evening will be adoption of an ordinance setting the first public hearing. In November of 2006, on the annexation, the master annexation plan prepared by the Planning and Zoning Commission was adopted by the city council. The commission, as I said, is recommending annexation of 420 acres of land, which is a part of Area E. Area E is in the north east part of County District, and this would be adjacent to the Baske River, thank you, between Highway 281 and 108. The property is, all of this 420 acres is owned by the Texas A&amp;M University system. The commission's vote was unanimous of the seven members present. This annexation will provide for utility extension to this area, and it will help facilitate not only our master annexation plan, but the university's 2030 master plan for future development in the area. And this utility extension and annexation will allow them to begin development of their property in this area. In accordance with Chapter 43 of the Local Government Code, the Municipal Annexation Act, you also have, the next map will show the 420 acres. You can see the kind of the purple line, which is our present city limits. This property goes, as I said, from 108 of North Grand Street, where Pigeon Road intersects and goes over to and includes Highway 281, the Morganville Road going north to town. This is a little better shot of it, but it also shows the proposed utility extension into this area to service the area. The orange line indicates the sanitary sewer main extensions to provide service to the areas. And then the water line, which will wrap around, the property will be the water main extension, and will also provide a continuous feed for fire protection to that area. You have on page 17 of your packet, the annexation calendar. We are required to complete the annexation within 90 days, or we would have to start over. This has a 71-day calendar. Your first public hearing is scheduled for May the 6th. Your next regular council meeting and the second public hearing will be at the June council meeting. And you can actually adopt the annexation ordinance on July the 1st. And that will be a total of 71 days from the date of the first notice of public hearing on April 22nd. You have on pages 19, 20, and 21, the service plan that is proposed to this area. With regard to police protection, the Stevensville Police Department will deliver the same level of service to this newly annexed area in accordance with our current city policies. Water and wastewater service is available, will be made available to the area. Water service is available and will be extended to the area. We do have an adequate water supply at this time to service this proposed area. With regard to wastewater service, we have a 3 million gallon per day wastewater treatment plant that was completed in 1995. There is adequate capacity at the plant to provide sanitary sewer service to this property. With regard to solid waste and sanitation, the city of Stevensville has a contract with Progressive Waste for our city services. And then the university also has their own collection and pickup to their facilities. So that will continue with their pickup and disposal of their solid waste. With regard to public streets, all of the developed public rights of way, which are annexed into the city, are maintained by the city street department. We will do routine preventative maintenance, and these streets will be scheduled in accord, for improvements in accordance with our master plan for street improvements, under the established criteria. With regard to surface drainage, any public drainage systems annexed into the city will be maintained by the city and eventually incorporated into our master drainage system. With regard to fire service, the city has two fire stations, one located at 212 West Tarleton Street and Fire Station Number Two at 1301 Pecan Hill Drive. We do have adequate suppression to handle that area, along with emergency medical services that will be extended to those areas upon annexation. These services will be provided with regard to annexation on the date of annexation. Watering utility service extension, when the university facilities are tied on, they will pay prorata charges to access these utilities. This is, this service plan has been prepared in accordance with Section 43.056 of the Local Government Code regarding our basic and primary master annexation plan and service plan. As I said, there is an ordinance on pages 23 through 25, which will need to be adopted to set the first public hearing. I believe Mr. Minkler is here from the university. If you have any questions of him, and I would be happy to answer any regarding the service plan.
Okay, any questions? Mr. McDannell?
Betty, I was looking at the timeline here, and it shows April 3rd, written notice mailed to property owners in the area to be annexed. Are there any other property owners in the area beside the university?
No, it will, they will go to the ANM system.
Okay, they go to the ANM system.
Yes.
I can see on page 19 and 20, all the things the city is going to provide when the property is annexed. You mentioned them. There's a total of seven or eight. What I'm not seeing, and I'm a little bit curious why we haven't had extensive discussions as to what the cost to the city is going to be to perform this annexation, and how we're going to fund it. Is that a question you would like to answer, or would you like Mark to help us with that?
As we always do with annexations, upon annexation, we have, if you remember, we have a timeframe to provide services to these areas. We develop a system improvement, which this is, the map you saw before that showed the utility extension, that's just kind of a preliminary look to be sure that we can provide those services. And then we also, at the point in time that the annexation is completed, then we begin a detailed study of the area to bid the projects that will be bid. Development in that area will also facilitate that timeline. But we do have two and a half years to develop the plan and begin implementation of those utilities and installation. That could be sooner, depending on the development in the area.
My next question, if I may, mayor?
Go ahead.
Have there been any discussions with the council as to the possibility of going across Highway 281 there and including Shriver, the cheese plant that has been wanting city water and city sewer for several years now?
Well, actually, there would be, there is a gap between Shriver, and actually, a portion of Shriver's property is actually outside of our ETJ at this present time. So we would need to do some annexation in this area before it would bring in all of Shriver to the ETJ.
So you're saying that it couldn't be included with this because of its proximity?
Some, all of Shriver cannot be at this time, because it's not all within the ETJ, all of the Shriver plan. If you, if you look at the future annexation map, the county road, I believe it's, is it 176? If you see it up here, under the O and the N on annexation, those areas are outside of the ETJ, and that is the Shriver plant in that area. Actually, it's a little past that.
What is the county road for Shriver?
I believe it's, it says it's 176 here. I'm not sure if that's correct, because some of those numbers have been changed. But you see 176 up there at the very top?
Where the big O is.
Yeah, right up there. That area that's just right off the top of the screen is the Shriver plant.
If I might, mayor, that area might be best served by that east side sewer that we talked about, coming around on the east side of the city, and it would eventually reach that and provide more than adequate service for everything from that area south.
I think you might remember, Russ, we, our discussions on the east side sewer interceptor, you know, we are reaching limits of what we can service with our existing sewer, and this is...
Because we haven't annexed anything for seven years, that's why we're...
The last annexation was in '07, yes.
'07. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Mr. Sveen?
I guess Alan kind of mentioned it. I'm just, I'm colorblind, so looking at your map, the lines is, makes it all difficult for...
It's kind of brownish then to you, probably.
It's kind of, yeah, brown, gray, something like that. So my question goes back to the east, this is not going to be serviced by east side, the east side sewer we've talked about.
No, sir.
So the capacity for what they anticipate using in this area is going to be serviced completely by existing sewer and water down Lingaville Road?
Yes, that was one of, that was one of the things we considered in the very beginning of, after this, when this was discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for pointing out the colors, David.
You just have to tell me which colors you don't see.
There you go.
One final question, Betty?
Yes.
Someone asked me today if this was going to include the new Tarleton Dairy Research Center?
No, actually, the dairy center is...
A little farther out?
It's actually right at the very tip of the ETJ up there, at the intersection of 281 and this 176 on the southwest corner.
Okay, so it's not included in this annexation proposal?
It does not include the dairy center, no, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Rue, go ahead.
I'm certainly not opposed to growth. You know, we need growth. And I'm not really, and partially I'm selfish, because 90, over 90% of all this property that we're talking about here for annexation is college property. And we put all of our money in there, as Mr. McDannell said, for utilities, anything like this. We've already put in a sewer line of 281 there, of the city money. How are we going to recoup any of our money back, and all the property belong to the college, and we don't get any tax revenue off of this anymore?
Okay, please, go ahead.
The university, when they tie on to the water and sanitary sewer mains for their facilities, will pay back to the city prorata charges for the utility mains. They also pay water and sewer charges to the city. So they are not, they are tax exempt, but they are not exempt from paying utility charges or proratas.
Are we putting roads in or are we not?
Not at this time, no, sir. No, sir, they are not, they are not requesting any street or extensions.
Or will it be parlayed in the future?
If they were to, if they were to extend and improve streets, they would do it just like any developer would at their cost.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? The, just a, a couple of, of quick questions I've got. The, the code that you mentioned, forty-three fifty-six, talks about two and a half years to come up with a, a plan, but is also, is also talks about providing services within four and a half years.
Right.
What, what would that mean in this case? Because we already have water and sewer to the boundary of the annexed area. So is this a, a, an extension of that?
When we do the utility extension, the ag, the agro lifer, the extension service building is already on city water through an agreement made a number of years ago.
Okay.
With that, the facilities at the university, we will provide that infrastructure to those as they, as they propose to develop, and then they will pay back the prorata charges. Normally, if you had existing facilities in an area or existing businesses in an area that you annexed, you have that four and a half year timeframe to complete those facility, those utility extensions to those existing buildings and properties.
Okay, so in, in this instance, I'm, I'm assuming that these facilities are already serviced by water and sewer, so it would be tying into that existing infrastructure?
No, these, these properties are presently on private wells and septic systems, with the exception of the extension service building is on city water.
Right, but there, there, there are lateral lines that are going from the wells to the buildings.
Yes, at this time, and they are serviced.
Right. So there would be the need for the city to extend a, a water main down the, the road to those service points?
We had, we have proposed to extend water and sewer into the area and make it available. The university would then tie their facilities, either new or existing, onto those water and sanitary sewer mains from their existing buildings or new buildings.
Okay.
And then would pay back their prorata charges to us, just as, as our other annexations have done.
Okay.
When they access the facility, the water and sewer facility.
And, and the funds for those are going to come from our water and sewer enterprise funds, correct? Is that, that's the basis of that funding?
It's still being worked out with the developer, and, and that will be determined. But if there are, is any oversizing, that obviously that would be, and/or if we are the ones that put it in and then get reimbursed for, then depending upon how, whatever agreement that entails, but yes, that would be. The water and sewer fund pay for water and sewer lines, yes.
Okay, and, and I, Mr. Minkler, Ty, I appreciate you being here tonight. Is, is Tarleton anticipating funding some of these lines?
Yes, we have discussed that with the city administrator. It's not, it's not going to be written on city, of course, and so I'm not an expert in funding facility or extension, but there's part of it is because it makes no sense for us to maintain and manage our own sewer and water facilities.
Well, I, I, so I, so I think what we're, and what we're talking about here is a, a partnership between the city and Tarleton, so that as these utilities are put in, Tarleton's paying for those, and then the city's maintaining them. And so when Betty's talking about prorata, that's a fancy way of saying Tarleton's going to pay for it to be installed, and, and then we're going to maintain it after it's done, right?
Developer's responsible for putting in the necessary infrastructure as they do their development.
Right.
And we accept that at some point now, what we are working with, with the university, and again, exactly how that's going to be, whether we put them in and assess it back, or they, they put it in, but either way, it's the developer's responsibility.
And, and Mark, I, I appreciate that. I'm trying to not get in too, too much detail here, kind of in the weeds, but to be able to say Tarleton's paying for this, and then the city's going to recoup water and sewer fees from Tarleton that they will pay for the life of the system. So it, it's not a financial burden on the, on the part of the city to install this infrastructure. Is that correct?
You're using the word burden, and that would.
As in a cost to the city, because Tarleton's paying for the sewer and water lines, correct?
Tarleton will be paying for the sewer and water lines.
Yeah, okay. Well, that answers that, that question, and, and Ty, I appreciate you being here tonight. You know, part of, part of what's happening with us on April fourteenth, the, the city and the county in Tarleton are meeting to talk about issues just like this. Where, where is Tarleton growing, and how does the city need to anticipate infrastructure needs? The county's going to participate in that as a way for us to, to provide some transparency across all the, all the entities so that we can, we can help each other out. And I, I think this is a, this is an example of that. The, the second question I've got is, is more for the, the, the staff here. Our, our memorandum says that the city is initiating the annexation, and I'd just like for the record for, for us to, to be able to, to state what, who initiated the action? How it was, how it was initiated for this annexation?
The university did not petition. They requested water and utility services at their facility, and we agreed that, and both parties agreed that in order for us to be able to extend those utilities, they will need to be inside the city limits, and therefore we initiated the unilateral annexation to accommodate the request.
Right, okay. So another way of looking at this, this, this is really a really big version of what we did about a month ago, when there was a, a lady that lived just outside the city limits who had her well fail, and she needed water, and we went through an annexation.
Their well is in jeopardy.
Right.
I wouldn't say it's failed, but it's in jeopardy.
Well, no, right.
The university's well is in jeopardy, which is why they called.
Right, so, so we're, it's, it's a consistent action, I guess, from what we did, you know, with the, with the lady that was on three seventy-seven to what, to what's taking place tonight.
This is nothing new. We've had discussions with the university, I, I, I know way back, but let me just sit here and say that for the last four years, we've had somewhat of an annual sit-down discussion. And it was two or, two or three back that we had this, and they had mentioned getting water out there and some potential plans to develop some additional facilities out of that area. And they gave us, in my words, a, a heads up that that, that this may be coming.
Right.
And the well issue that they are dealing with has created their necessity to say it's now's the time.
All right. So Mark, you just took the, the discussions and rolled them into an action as a city administrator to move it to P and Z, and that's what brings us here tonight?
Yes, yes, sir.
Right, okay. Mr. Sveen?
I think one of the good things about this is also, this is an enterprise, which means it's a business, this particular service, well, water and sewer. And so if you'll notice in the packet, we have capacity. We're, we're able to sell our product here and make revenue off that product. It really doesn't cost us any more money to do it. So this is a good thing for revenue purposes for the city. There will, so Freddie, it is a, financially, it is a good thing for Stevieville to be able to do this, because we'll be making money off the water that we sell them, the sewer that we process for them.
Okay, any other questions on that?
Mayor, I'd move that we adopt ordinance two thousand fourteen oh six, which sets a time and a date for a public hearing on the proposed four hundred and twenty acre annexation, the sixth day of May twenty fourteen at five thirty in six twenty-two.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to consider adoption of the ordinance twenty fourteen zero six, setting the first public hearing as outlined in our packet. Any discussion? All right, all those, we'll cast, we'll vote then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote approving ordinance twenty fourteen zero six. And we'll move now to, and, Mr. Minkler, thank you for coming tonight, just appreciate your participation. All right, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing to consider a request to rezone from R one, single-family residential district to B two, retail and commercial business district, lot eighteen, block one forty-five, city addition, located at two forty-five meter lane. Ms. Chu?
Yes, thank you. The planning zoning commission.
Matter, I'm sorry.
Brings forth a favorable recommendation to rezone this property at two forty-five meter lane. There is presently a single-family residence located on the property. The owner does propose to continue to lease the residence, and then eventually in the future, they will remove the residence from the property if rezoning is accomplished and expand their existing facility, their title business. You have in your packet the staff report, you have an ordinance on page thirty-two, which would affect the zoning change if you concur with the commission's recommendation. And if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Ms. Chu, this would be the least disruptive type of, because basically you'd go from a house to a title office, which is going to close it pretty early in the day. I mean, this shouldn't be a problem as far as noise or any issues with the neighbors.
Of course, anything allowed in B two, you know, once the property is zoned, any of the allowable uses are allowed, but the title company is the owner of twenty-two, twenty-two ninety South Loops, and they do propose in the future to replat the property into one lot.
You haven't heard, you didn't hear any concerns throughout the process?
I have not had any comments from the property owners that were notified, and they're in your packet on page thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Chu.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So is two ten first financial, am I getting this location correct?
Twenty-two oh one is first financial, twenty-two ninety is lawyers abstract title.
Twenty-two. Okay.
I don't know what color it is, it's kind of brown to me, is it gray?
There you go.
Across the road is first financial bank.
Across the road is first, I got you. Okay, I'm looking it upside down, thank you. Thank you, Alan, I appreciate that.
I used to have to identify restaurants.
There you go, I'm trying to figure out where I am.
Any other questions for Ms. Chu?
Thank you.
Okay, anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the action? All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition to the action? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
Mayor, I would move approval of the rezoning request by Lawyers Limited Partnership, rezoning their property from R one to B two as shown in our agenda packet.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix to approve ordinance twenty fourteen oh seven to rezone as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
We were all ayes.
Okay, it's a, that motion carries unanimous vote approving ordinance twenty fourteen zero seven rezoning from R one, single-family to B two, retail and commercial district, lot eighteen, block one forty-five, city addition at two forty-five meter lane. Okay, thank you, Ms. Chu. And at this time, we'll move on to a, a presentation on city general obligation refunding of bonds. And we've got Mr. Eric Mahah here to make that presentation.
Spell his name.
M A H A.
Mahah, M A H A.
Thank you, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Eric Mahah with North Southwest Company. George Williford cannot be here this evening, so you're stuck with me tonight, so.
All right.
There should be a piece of information that you have in front of you labeled information to propose refunding bonds, which may be circulated around. We have a couple down here if needed.
Looks like this.
Will they make it up? As financial advisor to the city, one of our roles is to monitor the city's debt for possible refunding or refinancing opportunities. And in the current market today, we've identified two of the city's existing certificates of obligation that we could refund for savings in terms of debt service. The information before you tonight, before we get into some of the numbers, I thought I would touch quickly on the process if council chooses to move forward with this ordinance. Starting on page three, we laid out some information in regards to a parameter bond sale. The code in the state of Texas allows cities to refund through what we call a parameter ordinance. In that ordinance, certain parameters are set by the council. If those parameters are met, the authority to sell the bonds would be given to the city administrator as currently penciled into the ordinance. That is one of the parameters. This is a, the same process the city went through back early two thousand thirteen, if you recall. The city refunded bonds at that time for savings, same process here tonight. The other parameters that I'll, I'll touch on briefly, maximum interest rate would need to be stated in the ordinance, and the most important parameter would be the minimum savings. This would be the minimum amount, either on a percentage basis or a dollar basis, that council would like to see from a refunding. As long as we're above that minimum amount, the pricing officer currently penciled in as the city administrator would have the authority to approve sale of the bonds. Upon sale of the bonds, the money from the new bond sale would be used to pay off the old bonds, and then the city would just make payments on the new bonds at a lower interest rate. The parameter is good for six months. For example, if, if council passes the ordinance tonight, and we come in tomorrow and interest rates take an upward trend, after six months, if we never meet that savings threshold, everybody would just go on down the road. There's no out-of-pocket expense or anything like that to the city if that were the case. Page four, we just talk again about the flexibility. We like the parameter bond sale because it does give us that flexibility to watch the bond market and get in quickly when interest rates are favorable. The other method would be to wait to a council meeting date, and we'd be subject to the market on that date. So this, by doing a parameter bond sale, we have a little more flexibility to watch Then page six, this is where we get into some of the numbers. On page six, we have summarized the two series that are proposed to be refunded. It's the series two thousand four. Originally, that, that series was issued in the amount of seven hundred, or excuse me, seven million one hundred and sixty thousand. Currently, there's five million one hundred and twenty thousand that's available to be paid off. The current interest rate on, on those certificates is a three point four one percent. The final maturity currently June one, two thousand nineteen. And I, I did fail to mention on the parameter, one of the parameters is the, the maximum term on the new bonds. Currently, it's drafted as June one, two thousand nineteen, so we would propose not to extend the debt, just lock in a lower rate. The series two thousand nine, originally issued one point five million, there's about one point three million remaining at this time. Also, they mature in two thousand nineteen. Combined, we're looking at around six million four hundred and thirty thousand available to be refunded. Page seven, this is a snapshot of the savings based on the current market. Similar to the recent certificate of obligation sale, we would propose what we call a private placement. Rather than go out to the public market for bids, we're seeing very good demand with the local banks and throughout the region for banks to purchase these bonds directly. So we would propose private placement, that's where the city would solicit bids on the bonds, receive the bids, and award the bids to the winning bidder in that case, the lowest interest rate. So page seven is a snapshot, if we were to take bids today, based on what we're seeing in the market. The effective interest rate, it's not shown on the page there, but it's about one point six percent is what we're assuming in today's current market. And at that, at that interest rate, you can see the savings around a hundred thousand a year through two thousand nineteen, total leaning close to four hundred thousand would be the debt service savings for this refinancing. On a present value basis, that comes out to about five point three percent. So we would take the savings on a present value basis and divide it by the six point four million being refinanced. being refinanced, and that gives us the 5.3 percent. We want to see that number as high as possible in our market. Anything over 3.5, 4 percent is when we start looking hard, hard at the possibility of refinancing. So, this being over that 4 percent mark, we feel like it's a worthy candidate for the city to consider. And then Page 8 is more speculation, just to show council, if interest rates were to increase between now and the time we lock in the rate, and we drop to a minimum savings level, assumed in the packet at 4 percent, what that would do to the annual savings. You can see, annual savings would drop from around $100,000 to $84,000, $85,000 in that case. And that present value savings percentage would be right at that 4 percent level. And then finally, Page 9, we've put in the packet a sensitivity analysis. This just gives an indication, if rates were to move either direction, how that would impact that present value savings figure. Currently, interest rates would have to move about .35 percent before we would hit a minimum savings of 4 percent. So, you can see the movement there. And that would get us up to about, right under 2 percent on the bonds themselves. So, if interest rates moves from 160 to date up to 2 percent, that would drop us below that savings threshold. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the parameters, the numbers, the process.
Any questions for Eric?
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. McDaniel?
On Page 7, at the top, it's showing $101,495 in projected annual savings to the city. And it says 2016 to, 2016 to 2019. Explain to us why in 2014, 2015, we don't have any projected savings?
Yes, sir. That's a very good question. Since we're refunding two different certificates of obligation, we have the ability to structure the savings on either component independently. In this case, one of the components is supported by the property taxes, the other component by utility revenues. For the property tax component, if we look at the city's property tax-supported debt service, there's a drop of about $70,000 coming this next year. So, what we've done, we've accelerated the amortization on that component to where we're paying off more on the refunding in fiscal '15, but that does show a loss in that year just on the property tax component. So, that keeps the property tax-supported debt more or less level for the next few years. If we were to take savings in that year, we'd see a drop in the debt service supported by property taxes, and then we see a jump back up. So, in an effort to smooth that out, that was structured in that manner. I don't know if, if the council would like to see that in another variety we can structure that way, but it typically would like to show it more or less level.
My final question is, on Page 8, as you mentioned, the projected annual savings is about $16,000 less. That's based on 4 percent, so we assume that the current market is lower than the 4 percent market of the future.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Mr. Savin?
I just think it's, it's really, I commend Mark and Walt on this particularly. Managing our debt is probably one of the biggest needs we have long-term, because we have been funding so much of our services through debt. And so, I appreciate y'all's work getting this, reducing this cost. It does put money back in the coffers for operations in the future, so I appreciate y'all doing that.
Any other questions for Eric? All right, can I consider a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2014-08, I believe, if that's right, number 2, which will adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the City Steam Bill General Obligation Refunding Bond Series 2014, appointing an authorized representative, and establishing parameters with respect thereto, and approving all other matters incident thereto.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, and seconded by Mr. Hogan, to consider approval of ordinance 2014-08, authorizing issuance of City General Obligation Bonds as stated. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? If that motion carries, unanimous vote. And thank you, Eric, for coming, coming down. Tell George we said aye. All right. All right. At this time, we'll move on to the nominations committee report. Dr. Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The nominations committee met on March 18, 2014. All members were present, including myself as chairman, also council members McDaniel and Evans. Our one agenda item was to determine whom we wish to recommend that the council appoint to the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Building Board, and the Dangerous Buildings Abatement Board. The committee unanimously recommends the following appointments. For Planning and Zoning Commission, Place 7, Micah Taylor; Place 10, Justin Allison. For Dangerous Buildings Abatement, Place 4, Joseph Hanson; and for Building Board, Place 5, Brent Virgin. And therefore, Mr. Mayor, I so move that these nominees be appointed to their respective boards and commissions.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Cross, seconded by Mr. Evans, to approve the nominations for appointment to Planning and Zoning, Dangerous Buildings, Abatement, and Building Board as presented by the committee. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries. Those places are approved as, as presented.
Mr. Mayor, this concludes my report.
Okay.
That's setting the bar pretty high for the Finance Committee to meet, isn't it, Mayor?
That's right.
As far as time goes.
That's right.
I want y'all to know, we can do this quickly. Scott, you got your time room?
It worked for me.
It worked for you.
Well, if y'all quit talking, so I can call the committees.
There you go.
And we'll get going, okay? Finance Committee report, Mr. Savin?
March 18, we also met in council chambers, and myself, Malcolm Cross, Alan Nix, and Brady Pendleton were present. We have four items, one of which, Item D, we've already taken care of tonight with the proposed refunding of bonds. Item A is an annual review of the audit report about, I think it was about six weeks ago, four, five or so, that they came and presented the audit to the city council. And we, we adopted there, accepted that report, and so we reviewed the findings there and in our, in our, it was February 4th is what it says there. So, I guess it'd been about seven weeks ago. And so, there's no action required. We just had to go over the report. Fund balances, again, in the audit, annual audit, those fund balances were discussed before the full council. The purpose for that is to see where we have our money savings, what kind of cash we have on hand, and any obligations that we have. We reviewed that and, and approved that in, in committee. There's no action required tonight. The last item is Item C, which is the Investment Advisory Services. There are funds that we just talked about, the fund balances, where those dollars are, and how we invest those dollars. And historically, over the last, I don't know how many years, staff had managed that? How many, long time? Forever? I guess forever. City staff have actually managed that, those investments, and it's brought to our attention and requests that we contract with an outside agents, Patterson Associates, for managing those funds. There's a $10,000 fee, annual fee to do that. Committee unanimously recommends that to the council for, for a contract. The $10,000, for those who are going to ask where it comes from, comes out of existing budget for administration, finance administration. If there's any questions, I can answer it, or Mark will answer them.
Okay. Any questions on that?
If not, no questions, then I will proceed to make a recommendation that we approve the contract with Patterson Associates, as stated in the committee meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Savin, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to approve the contract with Patterson and Associates for Investment Advisory Services. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous, the contract as stated for advisory services for investments.
I guess there was one other item, excuse me, Mayor, which is Item E, which is the pay plan. The Personnel Committee has reviewed and recommended a pay plan, and submitted to the Finance Committee for us to figure out how to implement it, find, pay for it, I guess is the way to put it. And so, it's being addressed during the next committee meeting. We don't have a date yet for that. We talked about that yesterday. We don't have a date yet. Mark and I have met and will be bringing to the committee, and then for some recommendations of how to fund it, where the money will come from and stuff. Any other, any questions?
When, when is the, we don't have a date?
No.
For the committee meeting yet?
No, we have a council meeting in two weeks.
Evaluations on the 15th of April, and the mid-year budget discussion will be April 22nd.
Okay. So, we're just looking for a date.
Probably, yeah.
Talking some more.
Okay.
Mayor, that's, that's our committee.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we'll proceed with the Personnel Committee report. And I guess I'll just tell the students, if you're looking for a place to make a break, this may be it, because I'm going to recess the council from our current meeting, so I can leave if you want to. Okay, you can stay there. And I'm going to then call us to order for the Employee Benefits Trust to discuss the employee benefit package. And this, this meeting is called because we have a trust that has been formed to be able to manage the employee benefit package that is, that is managed and overseen separate from the council. And I'll just, let's just pause here for a second and let people.
Shows how popular I am with the student body at Georgia. I am an alumnus. Thanks for.
You know what they do? They herd the snips.
You know? I was excited that we had some folks closer to my age here at a council meeting, finally, so.
What's your point?
Just trying to give them a, an opportunity there. So, just to, just to restate, we are now in, in session as a, as a part of the Employee Benefit Trust meeting to discuss the employee benefit package. And I'll call that, I've called that to order, and then we'll turn the meeting over to the Personnel Committee Chair, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that we approve the amendments from the April 2, 2013 Employee Benefits Trust meeting.
It's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented.
Thank you, Mayor. The Personnel Committee met on March 25, and for those of you that are, that are here that don't know, is our, one of our primary jobs, the Personnel Committee, is to fund our employee benefit. Thanks for coming. I'm real popular. Is to fund, is to fund our employee benefit package each year. That benefit package expires on April 30, so it runs May 1st to April 30. So, this is the meeting that we need to, we need to approve this in order to keep our employees' benefit package in line and continuing to run on time. Since 2012, we've hired a consultant, Wethie and Associates. And a week ago, Ken Wethie, the president of that group, came and gave a presentation to the Personnel Committee, and we talked about a number of things. The big thing on the medical insurance side is, Mr. Wethie's recommendation is that we don't change plans right now, because if you can turn on the news last night, you know there's a lot of uncertainty in health insurance with the Affordable Care Act. And one of the things the ACA, Affordable Care Act, is doing is driving up the cost of these group plans. And we saw that at the beginning of the year. We had a 3.63 percentage increase on January 1. That's $18 per employee. That was a big increase. And the primary reason for that increase was an ACA administrative fee that Mr. Wethie said you can't get around. We actually played a pretty good, pretty good percentage compared to what other cities had. So, on January 1, it already increased 3.63 percent on the medical insurance side. His recommendation is that we stay with our Blue Cross/Blue Shield Plan, and he got us a .06, or excuse me, a .6 decrease for next year, which would get us down to, would be a negative 3.2 decrease. We'd go down to 512.59. So, it was the unanimous recommendation to the committee that, that we take Mr. Wethie's advice and remain on Blue Cross/Blue Shield. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we award a contract to Blue Cross/Blue Shield Plan, RMA 16A, for employee health insurance.
Second. Okay, got a motion by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Savin, to approve the employee health insurance as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor. On the dental insurance side, again, because of the Affordable Care Act, we've seen a jump in, in our premium cost. This year, we had a two, last year, I should say, a year ago, we had a $2.18 increase to $23.97. Again, Mr. Wethie's recommendation is that we stay, we stay with Assurant for another year. He has negotiated with Assurant and negotiated us to a .96 increase, which, looking at my notes, is a 4 percent increase. And I did ask him point blank if, I was a little concerned about a 4 percent increase. And so, the first time that I've been through the process, I asked him, is that pretty consistent with what, what other cities and what other groups are seeing on their plans, dental plans? And, and Mr. Wethie's recommendation is, it's, it's a good deal, and you need to take it. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I will move that we award a contract to Assurant for Employee Dental Insurance Renewal Fee.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. McDaniel, to award contract for Employee Dental Insurance as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote.
And our final item, Mr. Mayor, as far as voluntary insurance, the city will continue to offer a full menu of voluntary benefits, including term life, accidental death and disbursement. We've got short-term disability, long-term disability, and these are available, available to employees. The city does not pay, when we get into the funding mechanisms of this, the city does not pay for any of this. It's 100 percent on the employee, but it is, I think, an important, important benefits that we offer our employees. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I move that we award a contract for employee voluntary life and long-term disability to the standard insurance program.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Nix, to award contract for employee voluntary life and long-term disability. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. And we thank you for that presentation, Mr. Hogan, and that, that will conclude our discussion as, as a body of the Employee Benefits Trust. So, at this time, I will.
Mayor, could I ask a question before we close that?
Sure.
Does that include the CareFly program that we initiated last year?
None of those do, but when you, when you fund, the funding does continue for us to maintain the CareFly provision that we've always done.
Okay.
But that's not, that's not in the trust.
Yeah, it's a good question. I asked Mark that earlier today.
It's not in the trust.
But, okay.
So, we'll, so we'll continue another item? Okay. All right, so we'll close the Employee Benefits Trust meeting.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn the Employee Benefits Trust meeting.
All right. And it's been moved, seconded to adjourn the Employee Trust meeting. And so, with that, I will then reconvene our city council meeting at 6:37. And just for those in the audience that may be curious, we, we just voted on, as a trust, to adopt the policies that will drive our employee benefit program. And now, we're going to proceed as a council, as a legislative body, to fund those items, to consider the motions associated with funding the policies that we just considered and approved. So, with that, I'll go back to Mr. Hogan.
And before, before I make the motion, Mayor, I just want to, to thank Mr. Wethie. I know he's not here, and thank the staff. And this is my first, you know, go-around as the Personnel Committee Chair, and I was, I was very impressed by Mr. Wethie. I will note that committee member and council member Savin brought up a few items in our committee meeting as far as risk management concern and increasing premiums to try to bring down deductibles and long-term care. And I just do want to note that, that we should bring those up in, in future Personnel meetings when, when we go through this process again next year. But, but thanks to everyone. I think this is a great deal for the taxpayer, and most importantly, it's good for our city employees. It allows them to live a high, high quality of life, and so I appreciate everyone's help with this. And with that, I move that we fund the benefits adopted by the Employee Benefit Trust for health insurance through Blue Cross/Blue Shield Plan, RM 16, for $512.59 per employee per month for 12 months, and dental insurance with Assurant for $24.93 per employee per month for 12 months.
Second. All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Hogan, and a second by Mr. Nix, to approve the contracts fund. All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Hogan and a second by Mr. Nix to approve the contracts, fund, approve funding for the contracts for employee health insurance and dental insurance as presented. Any discussion? Mr. McDaniel.
Mayor, I would just like to point out to the audience that if he hadn't told you this was his first time to do this, you wouldn't have known, would you? He did a good job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
I just read the motion that I wrote two hours ago. Thank you, though, thank you.
Good job.
Appreciate that.
It's like a press conference, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, any, any other discussion? All right, let's vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Had motion carries unanimous vote, accepting to fund the employee health and dental insurance as presented. And with that, thank you, Mr. Hogan, we'll move.
One, one final item of business, briefly, if you don't mind. Just, just so the citizens know, I think, an important role of this council each year is to evaluate our city administrators, city attorney, and city secretary. I believe about two weeks ago, each council member was provided with the evaluation forms. And those are due to the mayor by April tenth. So just want the citizens of the city to know that's a process that we're undertaking right now. And we will turn those in, those evaluation forms, to the mayor by April tenth. And from there, he'll take the ball and set up a meeting and roll with it. So with that, that concludes the Personnel Committee report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. And thank you, Casey, for your leadership of that committee and all the work y'all have done to get us here tonight. And then with that, we'll move to the Public Works Committee and Mr. Nix.
Thank you, Mayor. On the eighteenth, the Public Works Committee met and we discussed a couple of items during that. The first item we discussed was the annual quantitative financial information and utility profile for the year ended September thirty, two thousand and thirteen. This is an annual report that staff compiles from the information that they gather during the course of the year. It includes the number of connections, the number of customers, the usage, the production, the amount that's sold, the gallons that are treated, and a number of other interesting facts about our water system, production, treatment, and our, our wastewater treatment and collection system. This is done on an annual basis and presented to the council. If, if my memory is correct, it is also provided to the TCEQ and the Texas Water Development Board annually because we are an entity that provides these services to our customers. And so we do that in accordance with the requirements for these bodies as well. It helps us understand what the system is doing and, and how to continue to keep the system operating as efficiently as possible. I would like to commend Mr. Williams and his group for the work that they do with our system because they keep these things running day and night and they do an outstanding job for our citizens. These things are necessary for the city and it's also an informational journey for us on the council to see what we've done in the past year. And they provide information for the preceding year so we can have a comparison to document trends and keep up with those kinds of things also. Unless there are questions, the committee recommended to the council that we accept this report. And I would make that as a motion at this time.
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Evans to accept the quantitative financial information and utility profile report. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, accepting the report as presented.
Second item, also that we discussed that night, was our well monitoring report. This is also an item that is very crucial to the city of Steenfield. We have nine wells that we monitor and there are seventeen wells, I believe, that the Middle Trinity Groundwater Conservation District monitor. And because we share information with them and they share information with us, it helps us keep track of the condition of the aquifer. It helps us, again, notice trends, if there are any trends in certain areas. This coupled with the information that I mentioned in the previous report about the volume and the other items in that help us keep up with our use and the other information that helps us know as a city what's going on with the aquifer. We all know how important the aquifer is to the city. It's a vital resource for us to continue to grow and to be able to attract new people, businesses, et cetera. And you don't have to look very far to find cities that struggle with water supply and, and quality and quantity. And, and we are blessed that we have both. The information that we gathered from our wells and from the Middle Trinity's wells indicate to us that the aquifer, aquifer condition is stable at this time, continues to provide the, the resources that we need. And it is also important to note that the city of Steenfield is, is a large user from the aquifer. But we are also very mindful of the conditions of the aquifer, mindful of how important it is to us. And we strive to continue to be good stewards of that resource, not only for our use, but for everyone in this area. And again, unless there are questions, the council, the committee recommended that the council accept that report as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Evans to approve acceptance of the water well monitoring report as presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, accepting the water well monitoring report.
Last item on, on my agenda, Mayor, is the Water Conservation Plan and Drought Contingency Plan. Again, annually, we review these documents. And again, annually, we, we provide this information to the TCEQ and the Texas Water Development Board for them to have so that they know that we are keeping up with the things that we need to and are monitoring the, the current usage and the other things that we need to. We, after we submit these, or, or prior to us submitting these, the Water Conservation Committee has met and they recommended that we continue to use the drought conservation plan, but there is an update that we need to, to that particular item and the drought contingency plan. And they're, they recommend that that be updated in compliance with the requirements for the Texas Water Development Board, the TCEQ. And subsequent to that, I would move that we adopt ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh-nine, which will adopt the goals, portion of that to be amended to reflect the goals that the Water Conservation Committee has recommended, that we reduce our annual consumption of one hundred and four gallons per person by approximately one point five percent to one oh-two point four by twenty nineteen and then by, to one hundred point nine gallons per person by twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Hogan to consider adopting ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh-nine, amending code fifty-one, forty-one A as stated. Any discussion? Mr. Sivin.
I just think it's important that the citizens understand that the capacity is not the issue here in our ability to go get water. And we've done some things recently to protect Steenfield long-term, to be able to protect the water rights, including the water from, from the lake, but also some recent activity that will keep us long-term. How far do we look at future twenty?
Our current plan right now is to the, to the year twenty fifty.
Twenty fifty.
And, and we're meeting those goals.
So I, I just want, I think that citizens need to know that even though we're talking about, this is a requirement that we have a conservation plan because of, in case of a drought. But there is, we do have more capacity for long-term water for the city of Steenfield. I think it's, I want us to get it, citizens to get out there and get worried that, oh, we're running out of water like you hear some of the cities around here, like Alan mentioned Wichita Falls as an example.
Any others? Mr. Hogan.
I just want to make a point. I was watching the news the other night and I think mineral wells just to the north of us is, is, is running pretty low because of the drought. And, and I just want to commend our, Mr. Nix and, and the council members that have come before us and those that served because I think they made great decisions when it comes to our water supply. And I know I, I hammer a lot on economic development and I tend to get a little frustrated that we're not doing more here, but you can't grow your economy at all if you don't have water. And I think those that have come before us, I can't take any credit for it. Us have, have done a great job being visionary and thinking long-term with our water supply and, and it shows, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Well, I, I will just kind of pile on here for a second and, and make one comment that I think really stood out to me as we were going through this report. And that's how the citizens of our community are water-conscious. And, and I want to applaud the citizens for the work you're doing every day to make sure that you pay attention to how much you're watering, taking efforts to, to look into drought tolerant plants and zero escaping and other, other initiatives that are helping us as a community save water. Y'all are doing a great job and just, just keep it up. And the, the ability for us as a community to deal with this is the key to success. So I think we all should be, be pleased with the process, progress that we've made. And it is, as Casey, you're saying, it's important as we look at economic development in the future for us to be healthy in this area. Y'all mentioned mineral wells and Wichita Falls. It's good not to be in their, in their situation. We just, you know, need all, keep praying for rain. And hopefully that'll, that'll bring us. That's right.
That's right.
Okay, so. Unvote? Right. Okay, so all those in favor of the ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh-nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, adopting ordinance two thousand and fourteen oh-nine with the new conservation measures.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move on to the Public Health and Safety Committee report and Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Health and Safety Committee met on March twenty-fifth. And members include Doug Sivin and Brady Pendleton. We had one agenda item in which to discuss, which was multi-jurisdictional emergency response team. And there was a three-page memorandum of agreement that establishes the operating procedures of this emergency response team. And there are a total of six different entities that work together on this. The Hood County Sheriff's Office, the city of Granbury, the Somerville Sheriff's Department, and the Glen Rose Police Department, the E-Rath County Sheriff's Department, and the Steenfield Police Department. This is a multi-jurisdictional training together to create a response team for our immediate area. And Police Chief Bridges has recommended that the City Council officially sign the memorandum that sets forth the purpose and mission and other agreements between us and the other agencies. And I would like to thank Chief Bridges for his work on this. And I would move at this time, Mayor, that we approve the memorandum of agreement.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Hogan to consider approval of a memorandum of agreement creating a multi-jurisdictional emergency response team. Any discussion?
I want to make sure that we ask, Pat.
Mr. Sivin.
Describe the, there's a jurisdiction, in each jurisdiction, there was an identified individual who was to run the team in the case that it is in that jurisdiction.
Could you come to the podium, please, Chief?
There is a team commander.
Okay.
The team commander is currently a lieutenant out of the Granbury Police Department.
Okay.
There is an assistant team commander, which is a captain in the Hood County Sheriff's Office. There are assistant team leaders for the, for the various teams. If an incident occurs in Steenfield, the incident commander, the patrol supervisor, or whoever is in charge of the shift that day, requests this team and if it meets their call-out guidelines, they will come. And then once that incident is turned over to that team, then the, the team leadership is in charge of resolving whatever incident that might be. But they will work hand in hand with the supervision in whatever.
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction that the incident is going on in.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, Chief, while you're up here, I, I want to, I want to thank you for taking the lead in this effort. I don't, I want people to understand the significance of your leadership in this role and what it really means for our community. Because we, we live in a day and a time where you never know where the threat is coming from or how you're going to address it. And what has happened here is some rural communities have gathered together to multiply their collective capability for the betterment of all the citizens. A, a lot of the threats and, and, and applications that are available today may be driven toward departments that are in very large communities that have a lot of resources and they can just tap in and fully man a, a team with very specialized training. And what Chief Bridges has done with, with his peers is said, you know what? We can come together and do this same thing for our communities. And they've done it. And we, as a community, are, are safer because of that. And I tell you, anybody that's planning on trying to mess with any of the counties that are involved with this, they better look out because you guys are gonna, gonna be ready.
They'll train group.
Yes. Right, so you're able to take what might be a, a small group that couldn't fully outfit a team and you're able to come together to have the full capacity of that. And I, we should not underestimate the model that this provides to rural communities about coming together and being stronger as a unit. And so we, we all are very proud of the work that the Steenfield Police Department has done to lead this effort. I know it's been a collaborative effort, but our department has been at the table from the very beginning making sure that this happened. And we're really proud of the effort Chief Bridges did and the leadership and experience you've brought to this for our community. So thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to vote on this. Consider a motion. Are you moved? Okay.
And it was seconded by Casey.
Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we have approved the unanimous vote, the memorandum of agreement for the multi-jurisdictional emergency response team. And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda to consider the two thousand and fourteen Consumer Price Index Adjustment to Municipal Telecommunications Right-of-Way Access Line Rates. I won't make you say that, Mark.
There is, for every telephone landline, there is a telecommunications right-of-way access line fee. That fee currently is fifty-nine cents for residential, a dollar thirty-two per month, a dollar thirty-two for non-residential, which will basically be commercial. And for point-to-point, basically, I'm going to somewhat say for private lines, it is two, two dollars and one cent per month. The, we are allowed by law to increase those rates to a maximum rate that are spelled out there. I'm not even going to state, but we do need an affirmative action to not increase the rates. There's not a recommendation to increase those rates, but we do need an affirmative action to keep them because for all intents and purposes, it is an automatic CPI adjustment. So therefore, you need to take affirmative action to keep our rates at fifty-nine cents. It is the rate that was established at the point and time of deregulation. So we have not gone up on our, I don't believe we've gone up on our rates since deregulation on our. With that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions, but I do need an affirmative action to leave the rates at seven.
Okay, so with that, I'll consider a motion.
I have a question.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Nix, it's a question.
This is a pass-through charge to the customer, is that correct?
Under deregulation, what happened was is they began itemizing this item on each of their, on every customer's bills. It used to be a part of the aggregate fee, line fee, but they began, one of the things was, and so, yes, every, every customer sees that on their bill and, and for all intents and purposes, what you were calling a pass-through, the telephone companies apply that. Then every, once a year, we get a check for fifty-nine cents, time the number of lines, time the number of months, that is sent to the city for us to maintain the right-of-ways, which is why it's referred to as a right-of-way access fee.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Sivin.
I would move that we leave the race unchanged.
For a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. McDaniel, seconded by Mr. Nix to maintain the rate for right-of-way access line as currently established at fifty-nine cents. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote as presented. We'll move to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sivin, seconded by Mr. Evans to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? That motion carries unanimous, approving the consent agenda as presented. Alright, Mr. Kaiser, comments?
Thank you. Yes, I do have a couple of comments, first of which, though, I would like to point out, we will not have a meeting next week, but we do have scheduled meeting for April fifteenth and April twenty-second. More importantly, I think, it is, it is a very important meeting. We meet twice a year on our budget and this is our mid-year budget review on April twenty-second. So I just want to point that out and please set aside that time for that particular meeting. I don't have any real updates on any projects at this time, so what I, what I like to do is take turns. As you know, I very much appreciate all of our employees and I want to, I want to kind of do a twofold thank you. First of all, if you did not know and participate, and all the Tarleton students were here, but I want to just publicly thank them for what they refer to as their Tarleton Roundup. The Tarleton Roundup, I'll tell you that I was up there on a couple of occasions, I didn't get a chance to talk to a few of the students and personally thank them, but I want you to know that we very much appreciate, not only that you're getting a degree, you're going to be the leaders of tomorrow for us, but you're learning how to serve and be a part of our community and we want you to know, we're proud of you and thank you for being a part of our community and thanks for the work that you do and put back in it. So if you did work, they had over a thousand workers, I think their goal was like nine hundred and eighty-two, I think that had some significance. And they had over a hundred, I think it was a hundred and five or a hundred and ten projects that they actually completed that day. We had to bring in more trailers to be able to haul off all the trash that they actually helped us dispose of and clean up around town. And again, I just can't say thanks enough for the administration that put that together, but more importantly, just for the students that have gone and put back and given back to this community. We do, we do recognize it and thank you. We're very proud that you're in our community. But as a follow-up to that, let me just tell you that there are many staff hours that go into also participating and helping coordinate projects. I can tell you that many of our employees were down in the river cleaning up with those students. Were coordinating the trash pickup, progressive waste was very, very, I very much appreciate what they do. But as you know, I kind of try to take turns with some different employee groups, but in particular, the Parks and Rec Department and what I consider to be our property management team, this is the time of year, the park is going to be full every day. The trail is busy all the time with the weather the way it is. We have visitors coming in, we have the students here, and it is because of their efforts that our community and specifically our park facilities, the trails and a lot of the public right-of-way access areas continue and are maintained by these guys. And I just want to, and girls, but guys in particular, and I just really do appreciate what they do because they make sure that we put a good, a good, good face on our community for all these visitors that come in and use the facility. So, again, I want to say a special, in the high school, my daughter's just recently high school, a shout-out, if you want to call it that, they say, I want to give a shout-out, that's what students do, so I'll give a shout-out to, to the Parks and Rec Department and the property facilities guys because they just do a great job and to Drew for being the coordinator of that. So, with that kind of said, I'll be glad to answer any questions. The project has started on the sewer line project over on, in the Lockhart area, so if you haven't been over there, you should be seeing the crews working pretty, pretty busy. That's really the major project that's kind of kicked off right now, but we've got several others that will be kicking off in the next few months. But I'll be glad to answer any other questions, so.
Any questions for Mark? Okay, and council members, Mr. Hogan?
Briefly, just want to thank all the Tarleton students, shout-out to all the Tarleton students that stuck around. You're a great young citizens in our community and I hope to see you at the April twenty-second mid-year budget review. It's a really short meeting and if you come, Mr. Savine said he'll buy you dinner afterwards, so.
Didn't you say?
Or was he going to buy me dinner afterwards? Oh, okay. And I want to vouch, you'll see.
We are being taped, Corrigan.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
I had to be truthful, so. I do want to vouch for, Mr. Pendleton's not here today, he's on the E wrath County Farm Bureau Board and they're having a fly-in. When I worked on Capitol Hill, one of my favorite couple of days on Capitol Hill to be a staffer is when the Farm Bureau was on the hill and he's up there representing the county farm bureau and I'm sure he's rubbing elbows with our congressman and giving him an airful right now, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mayor.
Touch cross. No comments.
Mr. Savine? McGannell?
The only comment I have to make is, folks at home, mark your calendars. Early voting in the city and school election starts Monday, April twenty-eighth at the courthouse and runs through Tuesday, May sixth, and this year, election day is May tenth. We're hoping for a big turnout, please exercise your right to vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Nix? Mr. Evans? Okay. Well, I want to thank, this has been a really busy agenda tonight, a lot of, a lot of great work behind the scenes. I want to just personally thank all the committee chairs and their work in preparation for tonight's meeting. We've been here for about an hour and a half, but the meetings that led up to this, I know y'all have put a lot of work into that, so, so thank you for, for all that, the staff and the council. We will move now to an executive session. And I will, in compliance with the provisions of Texas Open Meetings Law, subchapter D, Vernon Texas Codes, Antetokounmpo and Code Swit Section five-five-one-seven-two, deliberations about real property.